Remember, talk right into the microphones, they're not the best.
Everybody, love your microphone tonight. Is this, is mine on at all? Is it? Okay. Because it doesn't sound like it is from here.
Scott be friendly with it.
Okay. Seven o'clock, so we're going to bring our planning commission meeting to order. We appreciate everyone who's here, those people who are also joining us online. We welcome you and thank you for being good citizen participants.
You're good now, sorry about that.
Are we caught up now?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay. I thought, golly.
You sound really good playback.
I've got a ghost going on back here.
We really have been heard.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Oh. We didn't choose anyone for reverence or pledge. Okay. So Commissioner Prince, will you lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly Father, we're grateful for the opportunity to live in such a great community and enjoy the blessings we have. We ask that we'll be able to be wise in our decisions tonight. Thank you for all those who have sacrificed for our freedoms and for the blessings we enjoy. And we say these things humbly in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Okay. The first item on our business is the approval of the minutes from the planning commission meeting of April 8th. Commissioners, have you had an opportunity to read through those minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
And did you find any corrections that need to be made?
I just wasn't sure where it said under, says Chris will possibly be the following comments, clarify counsel's position on resolution for general plan. I didn't know if that should say counsel's position or his position. Because I don't know that he speaks for the entire council. So I just wasn't sure if that's how they meant to write that on there. So.
That's a good point.
That's a good point. I think we should amend that because he was speaking only on his own behalf, not representing the city council. Okay. All right. Any other changes to the minutes?
There was one, it says Davis Weston, who's actually Dennis Weston.
Dennis Weston, yes. Rather than Davis Weston. I did see that. Any other corrections or clarifications for the minutes? If not, then we'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes for April 8th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the April 8th planning commission meeting.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. This is a public hearing. Our first item on our agenda tonight is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for an oversized structure for property located at 611 South, 6700 West for Mr. Scott Perks. You don't have a presentation on this or anything for us? Okay. Mr. Perks, is there someone here representing Mr. Perks?
My wife.
Would you like to come forward and state your name and address? Let us give you, and we'll have a little conversation.
Okay. I'm Nicole Perks.
And you live where?
I live, we live in Hooper, 5282 West, 5725 South.
Okay.
We're going to be building, want to be building down. I haven't seen it, I don't know yet.
Yeah, 611 South.
Yeah, there you go.
6700 West.
Yeah.
Okay. Can you tell us a little bit about your project?
So it's just going to be a little bit of riding arena in there. Just horses, we're just planning on putting a single dwelling home on there, but that barn for horses.
So right now you're asking for a conditional use permit for an oversized structure?
For the barn.
For the barn?
Yes.
How many horses do you intend to house there?
I think we just have six horses.
Six?
Yeah.
But these are your own personal horses or will you be stabling for other people?
No, just for horses. It's for pleasure riding.
Pleasure riding just for your own. So you're not going to be taking and boarding horses?
No.
Or teaching lessons or any of those things?
We're learning ourselves.
Okay. Fulfilling your dreams then, huh? Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Nicole?
Look at the drawings, does it have a second double loft? Anything else that way? Just complete the other?
Yeah.
So this, I don't know if you can see that, but this is where you want to build your home, right?
Yes.
And then that's the barn.
And this is a 20 acre parcel, is that correct? So it says, yes, you'll have plumbing and electricity?
Because I'd like to put a bathroom out there.
Yeah.
So it requires a second set of septic system out there?
So we have, we have the septic system drawn and the way that the guy designed it, it should just be one.
Feed to both, both, both will feed to it?
Yeah.
Any other questions for Mrs. Perks? Commissioners?
Did we want to say anything about the height?
I haven't seen that something that's.
Yeah. So in reviewing these plans, looking them over, and definitely we're not architects, but we have an ordinance in Hooper that is a 25 foot maximum height for a residential area. And granted, you're on 20 acres, but you still are in the R1 zone, which is residential one acre. Okay? So your plans show that they're 28, 10.
Plus the.
Yeah. Plus the cupola at the top. And I love the cupolas, I think they're beautiful. But we feel like we've been pretty consistent with other requests for oversized structures. And we understand that your footprint is really the reason that it's oversized, but we want you to be aware that 25 is our height maximum as well. So you may need to do a little bit of modifications in your design before you come for a building permit. Because I don't.
So there's no flexibility, probably have to stay with that. We could redo that so that the truck could drive underneath that one side with the hay on and all that stuff. That's kind of why that ended up being that high. So for any flexibility.
So it has to be that height to get your truck in?
Yeah.
To bring in, to bring in a little hay to feed the horses. Okay. So that's, you know, that's accessory to the use of the building.
I think as long as it's not causing a negative impact, where they are on a 28 parcel, I personally feel like it's different than if we're in the middle of a subdivision being that high, if it doesn't have a negative impact.
Well, I mean, same, same thing too with the size of it too. Like even in my neighborhood, a 10,000 square foot building would be, you know, huge. But on a 20 acre parcel, that 10,000 isn't that, that one drawing that Bryce showed, that's a drop in the bucket on a 20 acre lot.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. So. I guess we don't have any, do we have any other questions for Nicole at this point in time?
Do we have to do anything with that?
I think the mayor's reviewed it with the attorney just to double check for us, but.
We're going to just talk this over. But thank you for answering our questions. And we're going to bring it back to the commission and discuss it and see if there's possibility of an exception or something like that. Just so you know, if we, if it's determined to be an agricultural building, then there's different height restrictions. But there's also different use restrictions. So I'm not exactly sure. So I think the better way to treat this will be whatever he tells us in just one minute. Okay?
Yeah, sorry. Sorry. I think I'm up to speed. So the question in our one for the accessory building is, okay, it's over 25 feet because our base is 25 feet. Okay. So the height considerations have to comply with that. Except the code then says accessory structures over these requirements require a conditional use permit. So that's why they're asking for the permit. However, it cannot be over 35 feet. So you don't have the authority to go over 35 even with a conditional use permit. But if this is 28, like I'm understanding it to be, you can grant a conditional use permit to allow it to 28 feet.
Okay. Good. Thank you. We needed that clarification. So appreciate that. Okay.
Public comment?
Yeah. Thank you, Nicole. We appreciate your time. Is there anyone here who would like to make a public comment regarding this item on our agenda? Okay. Seeing none, then we'll bring it back here to our planning commission, commissioners for additional discussion.
And like I said, if the, yeah, looks good.
Yeah. Okay. So understanding what our city attorney just explained to us, that in no way cannot exceed the 35 feet, but we can exceed the 25 feet with the conditional use permit for an oversized structure. So given that information, are we prepared to make a motion?
I'll motion. I motion that we approve the conditional use permit for an oversized structure located at approximately 611 South, 6700 West for Scott Perks.
Brandon, do we need to indicate that that's oversized for both square footage and height?
Yeah, just clarifying the motion that you're allowing for both, conditional use permit for both height and size.
Okay. Add that to my motion.
I second.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit for the oversized structure, which covers not only the size of the building, but also the height of the building. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you. The motion passes. Thank you. So no, you don't need to do anything else. Go forward. All right. The next item is a public hearing for conditional use permit, also for an oversized structure for Brandon Sharp on property located at 4590 South, 6700 West. Is there someone here?
I'm Brandon. I've been at the address for 11 years.
Okay.
So I just looking to build barn for shelter for horses. So it'll be five horses sheltering in it.
Okay. The pole, pole barn type? And you will not have plumbing or electricity out there?
No.
Not at all? Okay. Just know that if you do in the future, you'll need a building permit to install those if you choose to.
Correct.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Brandon?
Straight forward.
Okay. Thank you, Brandon. We appreciate you coming. Again, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who would have comment regarding Brandon's request for a conditional use permit? Seeing none, then we will close the public comments and bring it back to the commissioners for any comment or discussion?
Looks good.
Anyone have any want to say?
No.
Okay. So I think we would entertain a motion again for a conditional use permit for Brandon Sharp for his oversized structure.
I'll motion that we approve a conditional use permit for Brandon Sharp for an oversized structure located at 4590 South, 6700 West.
Okay. We have a motion from Commissioner Wilcox. And we have a second from Commissioner Platt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Nope. Thank you. Mr. Sharp, congratulations. Build on. The third item on our city business tonight is for a conditional use permit for a accessory dwelling unit that is 756 square feet located on the property at 4747 South, 5900 West. This is for Dave and Cara Osere. Dave, would you like to step up here? Hey Cara, come forward.
Sorry, I'm everything, Cara. I'm David Osere, this is Cara Osere. I've been living here in Hooper for eight years at 4747 South, 5900 West. Just around the corner.
Okay. And we see from your request that you want to build a garage slash shop with an apartment. And the apartment will be ground level as well as the garage, so. This falls under our new ordinance for accessory dwelling units. And I see that you've signed this, that you understand it and read the requirements.
Yes, we have.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for the Osere's?
You didn't want a door going from the apartment into the garage?
No.
I mean, it's not required, I just.
Yeah. We did not want one.
Because.
We wanted to keep our garage, if we wanted to have our tools in there, keep it locked up separate from the apartment.
Just out of curiosity, who's going to live there?
Our daughter.
Our daughter. Because I would like to.
We want to get them out of the basement.
Yeah. I like this concept. I kind of like a barn, barn dominion type.
Yeah.
Yes.
I think it's great. I love seeing things like this come.
Yeah.
So I think it's a great thing to do these accessory dwellings.
You can go a little bit bigger on it. You sure you don't want to go a little bit bigger?
Somebody said you should always go bigger.
Exactly.
Well, it's a maximum of nine 60 square feet. And you are at 756, but it lays out nicely.
Yeah.
Fits your lot nicely, the way you want it to be, so. I like your, I like your plan. I think it looks nice.
Yep.
Hey, just draw up plans again, come here again, rinse all over.
You don't want to come back with me?
I love you guys, I know.
Yeah. All right. Commissioners, do you have any questions anymore for the Osere's? No? Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone here who would like to make public comment regarding this request for accessory dwelling unit? Okay. Seeing none, then we'll bring it back here. If we have any other discussion? No?
No, looks good.
Okay. Then we would entertain a motion for this request for conditional use permit for an accessory dwelling unit.
I'll motion that we approve, sorry, I have to get my ring through. A conditional use permit for, are we calling it an oversized structure? Or an accessory dwelling unit? Am I looking at the wrong page here or is it just on my?
It's on your agenda incorrectly.
Okay. For an accessory dwelling unit, 756 square feet located at 4747 South, 5900 West for David Osere? Did I say that right?
Correct. I wonder if we need to clarify that this ADU is also going to have a, it will be a garage and an ADU.
Okay. So for an accessory dwelling unit and a garage?
I mean, the reason, yeah, the reason that they requested the conditional use permit is because of the ADU. Because neither one of them are oversized, but yet they're combined. And so we just want to make sure that it covers both of them.
Okay. I'll amend that to include that.
But I'm not sure if it's necessary, but I think it can't hurt.
Just in case.
Right. Okay. So we have a motion from Commissioner Prince to approve this conditional use permit.
I will second.
And we have a second from Commissioner Greener. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Go get to work.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item on our agenda tonight is a public hearing and a preliminary plat approval for the Miles subdivision for four lots located at 6300 West and 4600 South. This is for Brent Miles. And I think we might have a presentation. So Brent?
Wait a minute.
Wait a minute. Yep.
Well, let me see, I did ask to share the screen, Teresa, but. You can share it too, or?
Yeah. It's not bringing up your screen yet.
Obviously.
There we go.
Okay. So now we're ready. So this is, this is a Miles Farm subdivision located at the intersection of 6300 West and 4600 South. West of here a few blocks. It's four lots in the R2 zone on two and a half acres. And they're here tonight to, for preliminary plat approval. I've highlighted here, you can see in red, this is the actual parcel that's being considered. Right next door is a small subdivision of three lots that was developed a couple of years ago by the same developer, Fielding Acres subdivision. So kind of get a perspective as where this is. And again, this, this actually came before the planning commission and council late last year. One of the last things to, to be represented as a zoning change at that time. So this, this is the plat. So there is one, one long lot that's sold here next to the other three from the Fielding Acres. And then three smaller lots that front on 6300 West. All of these lots are proper size and frontage to meet the ordinance. And this subdivision also will get all frontage improvements, both along 4600 to the corner and around the corner on 6300 to help dress this corner up and improve the drainage in that area and tie into improvements that were made just to the east of here in Fielding Acres. So this is our, our staff has been through this a couple of times as part of the preliminary plat review. And before I wanted to emphasize that on behalf of Jared and I who reviewed the plans, from a preliminary plat standpoint, we're satisfied with the plat and approval of plans. We recognize, and you probably saw that in our latest memo, there are still a few things, a few things to be worked out in the final plat phase. And those have been clearly noted in the review memo, so they would not get missed. But from a preliminary standpoint, there's, there's a long way relative to having a good plat and good improvement plan. So we know we've still got a couple of things. But this is, like I say, this is just preliminary and you still get a chance to have us come back to final and tell you that everything's, everything's worked out. But our ordinance are preliminary, doesn't require the level that we've already received, so. But we do have preliminary or will serve letters from Hooper Water Improvement District, Irrigation Company, Rocky Mountain Power, Dominion Energy. The fire marshal has actually given final approval. And we still require final approval letters from Hooper Water Irrigation saying that, you know, they've had a chance to delve in and get final details reviewed. So anyway, that's, they're, they're, like I say, they're here for preliminary plat approval. And as a staff, we're satisfied with where they are at this point, so.
So maybe I missed this, this was just a typo on our thing again, that says they're here for final approval? Am I missing?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're.
Final plat approval for Miles subdivision.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
This is their, this is their first visit, so.
Okay, that clears up all my questions, so.
You were really hopeful. You were really hopeful, and now we did it. I know.
Sorry.
If it were, if it were three lots, it'd be, you know, a minor subdivision. But it's four lots and that, that doesn't qualify as a minor subdivision at that point. So.
Yeah. So it's a preliminary.
So we have to tell them.
Does it really?
The first one that we got says.
The one that came on the packet was that, that we revised it on Monday. And so that's why I put copies up there for you guys because we had to correct, so we're still learning.
Yeah, mine says final, so.
It's true. It's, the one that came in, the one that was emailed to us a week ago did say the final. And then, but we have to allow for some of our new staff people.
I just had a bunch highlighted there, it's like, this is final. I'm confused, so don't, I'm good.
Okay. All right. Is that all you have for us, Tracy? Okay, thank you.
Questions for me or developer?
Would you like to present yourself?
Sure.
Now it's your turn.
Thanks, Tracy. Grant Wells. I live in Syracuse, 2381 South, Buffalo Ridge Drive in Syracuse. Hooper resident prior to that as a kid, growing up for 19 years. 21 technically. And then a proud member of Hooper beforehand, so. Anyways, we are really excited about this. We appreciate the review. We've got a bunch of the stuff that was on the memo to get in, already in. And obviously I'll have to review that after, but yeah, we hope to have final here shortly, so. Any questions for us?
Will you be moving back to Hooper?
I don't know. Yeah. It's going to be hard to turn my kids away from where they're at now, but maybe.
That may be contingent.
Right.
I'm just kidding.
I really like the way you've laid it out with the four lots instead of trying to fight to get five in there.
Yeah. It is much cleaner for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It just looks nice. We've got really good frontage.
Right. Lots are really large.
And I think that they're going to be very desirable as well.
Yeah, I think so too.
Do you already have them all sold?
Say again?
Do you already have them all sold?
No, we have lots of people trying to buy them. We're just on the way, so. So we know what our cost is. And our costs are going crazy, as you know, so it's kind of hard to do anything like that.
Yeah.
But, yeah. That's why we're anxious to get it approved before cost keeps on going, right?
Yeah.
But, yeah. So thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Moss?
Look, he's just aware of all the little things in there, so. Yeah, the memo. We did, is there been another one sent out? Maybe I missed another one sent out, Tracy, did I send the one we had? The recent stuff back in.
And the April was.
This is dated April 28th, so.
Yes, so we did address those items.
Yeah.
So we, we should have everything in, they probably just haven't had a chance to review, so.
Right.
We do need to get.
I don't think we've seen anything from that.
Okay. Okay, then I'll go check on that and make sure. I do know that we actually do still need to get final letters from some of the utility companies for final. Yeah. So we do have a couple items to get. All right?
Yeah, it looks good.
Thanks, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
No, you're good. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to make comments regarding the request for Brent Miles? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back here to commissioners. Do you have any additional comments you'd like to make?
Not even.
I would like to just say it's nice to see preliminary approval come through that's this clean and not.
And pretty quick too.
And not, yeah, given.
Amanda was ready to announce.
I was ready to announce. I'm like, wait a minute, there's like four things on here that aren't ready yet.
You can go back out, go back in.
Yeah. Okay. Seeing no more comments from the commissioners, we entertain a motion on this request.
I will motion that we approve the preliminary plat approval for the subdivision located at 6300 West, 4600 South, four lots.
Do we recommend that to city council for preliminary?
Yes, it's a recommendation.
It's a recommendation to city council that they approve it.
Okay. I've modified mine per Amanda's modification.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion that we recommend to city council for preliminary approval for the Miles Farm subdivision. And we have a second, so, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously.
Thank you so much.
That'll be nice. Okay, the next item on our agenda tonight. And sometimes the agenda gets changed, but I think this is where we're at now. This is a public hearing and a final plat approval for High Strum subdivision, which is a one lot subdivision, located at six thousand south and forty-seven hundred west, and this is for Mr. Kelly Taylor.
So that address is actually wrong. It's, it's just up the street here on fifty-five hundred west and about thirty-nine hundred south. You'll recognize this because last month, this piece just above it was here as Christianson Fairway.
Uh-huh.
And now this piece down below is one lot known as High Strum.
So the address is really thirty-nine twelve south, fifty-five hundred west?
That's correct, yes, just, just on the other side of four thousand a little way, so. So, yeah, like, like was said, it's one lot on two point two acres. It actually is in the R-two zone, which allows for a much smaller lot. But the key to that, when it was rezoned, it was rezoned many years ago, but the key was to be able to get a hundred feet of frontage out here, which was exactly what happened with the Fairway estate or Christianson Fairway right there. So, anyway, it's, it's one lot, so it is final plat approval of no, on an existing road with no new roads being proposed. So, that makes it possible, so. This is the plat, a nice, a nice L-shaped piece there, large. And we've been reviewing the plat and also had a little improvement plan relative to some utility work out on fifty-five hundred west. And I know that Jared has spent time out there. The actual improvements, by the way, just so you're aware of this, and the one next to it, the Christianson Fairway, are being added into our fifty-five hundred west road project that we're just starting conceptual design on, so.
So this will have curb and gutter and everything in front of it?
It will eventually, yeah.
But the road is gonna be wider first.
The whole road will eventually, on both sides, so, you know, within a couple of years.
So are they required to let escrow that now?
They will, and we will collect that escrow and use that towards the project, so. Anyway, that's the nature of the plat, just like you saw last time with Christianson Fairway. We believe as a staff that all the memo items have been completed. And we've received all the necessary correspondence from the outside entities to be able to say that they've, they've given their blessing for this one lot, so. I don't need to say much more about that, so if you have any questions, be happy to address them. But Mr. Taylor is here as well, so.
Okay, any other questions for Tracy? No? Representative for this request, would you like to come forward, please?
Kelly Taylor, thirty-six oh nine south, fifty-five hundred west. Any question?
Like we talked about in our work meeting, I just wanted to see that email verifying just the, the property disputes, and you showed it to me.
Well, Hooper City sent me the email saying that it was taken care of through-
That it didn't receive.
Yeah, that's the only eye, 'cause you know, property disputes can get-
I sent my boy a thing that'd bring it, and he never showed up.
Go figure, right?
Yeah, we did see that as a staff, and that allowed us to check that item off, so, yes.
Is the property dispute you're talking about involving the Woodward property?
No, she's a little further, uh, south, I think, Allison?
Yeah, Allison, she had contacted me with some concerns. I don't know if it was about this particular parcel, but I know the way that the county have things on the plat, I mean, it was incorrect. So I just wasn't sure if that was a vector I just thought.
You don't know, you don't-
The Woodwards is next door to that.
Woodwards?
Woodwards.
Are next to you, or, or Tara?
Which is part of the Tara subdivision.
Kind of L-shaped it.
Right.
Yeah, I, I didn't hear anything.
Okay, well, as long as, I mean, I trust Tracy's looked at it and everything, so I just didn't know if that was connected at all with this, or?
Well, we received word from the recorder that whatever looking at was proper, so.
Okay.
But I think, I think Allison's concerned probably 'cause she has a garage back there.
Yes.
I think, and she, obviously that's not in jeopardy to be torn down, 'cause it's not her property.
No, it would be called her.
Yeah, okay.
There was somebody else's name or something on their parcel that shouldn't have been on there or something, and so, I, anyway, we can look at that outside of this. I just wasn't sure, you said property dispute, which we're talking about, so.
Okay. Any other questions for Kelly? Nope, thank you, Kelly. This is a public hearing. Anyone here who would like to make public comment regarding this item? Seeing none, then we'll close public comment, bring it back to the commissioners. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, then we will entertain a motion for this request for a, this is gonna be a final plat approval for High Strum. Oh, I did want to ask, where did that name come from?
Well, my boy made it up.
He did.
'Cause we hunt, archery, fishing, we're in the mountains all the time hunting, so we want to call it High Strum.
High Strum, there we go, okay. I thought maybe you guys were just like on edge out there all the time.
Somebody said, they're not gonna let you have that name.
I've been called High Strum and I don't hunt, so.
I can show you names, yeah. So you're fine.
No, no, I, I, I like the name, I just wondered if it had some underlying sentimental meaning.
Yeah, he said, we're gonna get one of those rocks and have a carpet in there and set it out in the front yard, with the hunting and fishing and all that.
Oh, there you go, okay, 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 back to business, sorry. We had no other comments, so we could entertain a motion for this request for a final plat approval.
And this is being recommended to the city council?
Correct.
Yes, I'll recommend that we, recommend city council final plat approval for the High Strum subdivision located at thirty-nine twelve south, fifty-five hundred west.
So we have a motion from Commissioner Platt to recommend to city council approval of this final plat. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And we have a second from Commissioner Wilcox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Carry on. Okay, the last item on our city business tonight is a preliminary plat approval for the amended Silver Saddles Phase One subdivision, which is twenty-five lots. Tracy, do you have a presentation for us?
Well, I just wondered if we need to clarify exactly what, what's happening here. Mayor, because the plat isn't changing, the only thing that's changing is, is this drainage plan, right? So, and then this subdivision had final approval over a year ago, so do we, um, how, how are we describing what we're actually doing here?
I, I think we're describing a final on this. We've already had public comment, had a preliminary. The only thing in, in question is if it's changed. But it really, there's only part of it.
The plat hasn't changed, just the drainage plan, is that, do I understand?
Yeah, for sure, there would have been no plat, nothing's changed on the plat.
So, I, I mean, you could phrase it final approval of the subdivision itself. I mean, just because that's all inclusive to, I mean, but you could specify, you know, what you're doing is discussing the drainage plan. But you're gonna, we basically need to re-final approve the thing.
We need to give it a-
If it's gonna be able to be recorded, it has to have a final approval again because it's changed.
Because it's been amended.
Yeah.
The, the drainage plan has been amended, so.
Right, yeah.
The plat is still the same, but the drainage plan has been amended.
But I don't think it needs to come through, to that point, I don't think it needs to come through two times, like preliminary would come through, and then it finally would come through. I mean, this is it, it's coming through to be discussed and a vote taken, one way or the other, on this change, which is the drainage plan.
Okay.
But when you make your motion, if, you know, whenever you make your motion, just indicate final approval of the subdivision with all encompassing, you know, drainage plan included.
Okay.
So.
Tracy, can you explain to us then what happened with the drainage plan?
Yeah, Jared asked me, give a little background, and then he's here to help address any questions you can have.
Thank you.
So, yeah, so this Silver Saddle subdivision received preliminary for two phases a couple of years ago, and then received final approval for Phase One early 2020. That was with a different developer. We, we actually had a pre-construction meeting with that developer and their contractor. And then within a couple of months after that, this, this subdivision, this development got sold to Nielsen Homes.
Was that Josh's name, Tracy?
No.
Miss Brown.
No, the original developer was Kevin Ivans.
Okay.
And Larry Daly was the contractor that we met within the pre-construction meeting. And then it got sold, and starting in about April of last year, we received a, a revised drainage plan, which is the sheet seven, which we reviewed. And, and essentially Jared and I responded as, as a review, we, we liked what we had before. We didn't, we didn't like what was being proposed now, and then it's gone back and forth a couple of times. And, and I'll, I'll just explain that, that, that two real key issues that we were looking for, that we were hoping to try to overcome, which we thought we had overcome in the original approval. One is, one item is, this is Phase One, the backside of Phase One, and this will be Phase Two. And we were not, not, we originally were, were able to show that there was going to be a small peak right here between the lots, the back of the lots, so that all the lots would drain away from the, the back fence. We were just trying to avoid having everything drain to a low spot between lots, particularly when they're not built yet. And, and to prevent just that standing water and any ponding back there. And so we had the previous plan show that, you know, there was gonna be sloping from, from the back lot towards the front in both phases. And, and that, that went away with the, with the plan that we received initially. Since that time, there's been, there has been some improvements. They are, they are showing some, you know, nearly, nearly flat. And our response to that was, well, just go a little bit further and make the whole thing flat, so that there isn't any possibility for any ponding. So that's, that was one area. The other area then is, is this area along this, this is Jay Thompson's property, existing property. We're always concerned about what, what the drainage is gonna do onto existing property. And you can see these, these represent one foot contours. So, you know, across some of these lots, there's two to three feet of, of fall to the back. And the, the proposal right now is just to, to build a berm along the property line and put a fence in that berm, essentially just to connect or to receive and, and detain the water on the back of the lots with this berm, some, some kind of a dip basically, or dam, and we also don't like that. We do not like rear lot drainage systems, storm drain type systems, but there are cases like this where we feel like, you know, we'd rather have the water collected in the back of the lot and take it away to the storm drain out here than have it be panted in, in a dam at the back of the lots. So, uh, so those are, those are the, the two main things. There were a couple other things on our, on our memo that we, at least one of them was, had been addressed, and, and then another one still for discussion, that we've never really had a discussion about with the developer, but, anyway, that, that's kind of the background. I'm gonna let Jared weigh in, that's kind of how he feels about everything right now, and what his, what his perspective is as public works director, so.
I think, excuse me, I think Tracy's pretty well summed it up. We've just, our experience has led us to, if the roads go in and get built up and build dams basically around, and everybody's back lots are low, when we get a rainstorm, they're calling us, wondering why they got a foot of water in their backyard. And sometimes, different landscaping, different homeowners, it's all in one guy's backyard. And he wants to know why his neighbors is running onto him, and it's just a lot better situation to have it so that it doesn't concentrate on that coincides with our ordinance, that we don't approve a drainage plan that concentrates water in one area or onto adjacent property. So I think we really, overall, the subdivision doesn't have many problems. We, we're pretty happy with all the rest of the infrastructure. Their new plan has improved things substantially from what was originally approved, as far as they lowered the road and, and made these fields less, but we just still feel that they need to be addressed and, and the water needs somewhere to fill.
Okay. Any other comments, so are there? Are we good? Okay, is there a representative here for the Silver Saddle subdivision?
Steve Bingham with Nelson Homes.
And where do you live, Steve?
I live in Kaysville. Nelson Homes is at fourteen ninety-three East Bridge Line Drive, building south of here.
Um, questions for Mr. Bingham? Do you want, do you want to first kind of present your position on all of this? Because obviously the drainage is a huge issue.
We've provided our responses and our reasonings, and there's still just some disagreement on, on, on the required drainage. We're certainly open to be the work with staff, any drainage and utility issues, but our responses have already been sent in.
How can they, how can you change that from the original plan? What was the reasoning behind that?
Um, there were quite a few, and they're in our responses, so it didn't, the, the folks that were developing before aren't builders. They were developing to sell the lots, and it didn't work from a building standpoint.
I didn't see him in there, but that's okay. Maybe I didn't get the response, but I didn't, I hadn't seen any reason from Nelson Homes why that he deviated from that in this packet.
See, I don't know what was included in your packet, but so there are-
Something from your attorney. There's something from your attorney in there, so. Anyway, so I, I'm, I'm kind of unclear why you switched gears, that you're saying it was an inefficient plan, but we approved it.
Yeah, as David has indicated, there were, there's some significant improvements in the utility plan from the original plan. Not the least of which is the, the elevation that would have been traded to, to tether property to the north, given the vote elevations that would have limited significant disadvantage to the elevation of the road down the property line.
It looks like on this one, you guys are really close from top back of curb on lot eleven through eighteen. As far as I can tell, within a foot, foot and a half maybe at the most. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think, I think we commented that they were, that they were flat or nearly flat. Just wanted to see that it was extended all the way, all the way to the north, so that-
Yeah, so that there was no possibility for that bonding, and, and I, I honestly, I, I thought, I, I mean, yeah, there were there.
Part of this has been improved as a result of forcing the road to be left. We, we thought that, we thought the grading plan and the drainage plan was better, that, that part of it was better in the first set, so. And we will continue to hold that position.
So are you proposing a berm behind lots eleven through eighteen and Phase Two, those lots? Or is it just on Jay Thompson's side, that berm? Where are you proposing that to go?
It's, again, I'll, I'll reference it to the, to the responses that we've already provided. It's, it's a characterization, characterization of a berm isn't the way that we would look at it. It's, it's more for division of the property as it is. We're not suggesting that it's there.
But, but the location, is it, is it on both property lines on the back? Like on Jay's side and then, and then is it proposed between lots eleven and eighteen and then the future Phase Two? Is, does it go there?
Yeah, I don't know, we've shown it there, but that would be the last one.
No, it's just on Jay's side?
Just on Jay's property, around the, around that property.
You're asking if it's on the back of Phase One or Phase Two, is that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, yes.
Berm's gonna be there too?
Yeah, you have a delineation to the property line as to if that elevation changed.
I just see a, I mean, 'cause you're bringing in dirt anyway, Phil, to make a berm.
No, there would be dirt on site for that, so we wouldn't.
I could, I mean, my, what I see happening is a homeowner coming in there and doing some landscaping, they just flatten that sucker right out. That's a possibility.
Certainly is, yeah.
And then we got the foot of water in someone's backyard.
Well, there's state law that governs that beyond any ordinances, right? So state law governs that anybody, any landowner has to convey water, you know, storm drain water, keep it from flowing onto adjacent properties, so.
And that's our responsibility too, is to make sure it flows away and not onto another property from state code as well, so.
So it sounds like, a couple times you've noted in here, or your attorney has, Nelson Homes is willing to discuss reasonable solutions to the city's drainage concerns for these lots. So, it sounds like you're open to coming up with a solution.
Absolutely, yeah.
If we, if we moved at the table this, you would have some time to do that, so.
No, our request respectfully is for a recommendation tonight.
I mean, I mean, just so that we clarify, our, our stance has been that we don't approve things subject to, or recommend approvals subject to, because we don't want to pass on problems to the city council. You know, I mean, we've seen you before, so it shouldn't be a surprise that that's kind of our mindset. So I guess, I know you're referring to the response from your attorney, I guess, we've all read that. So I'm just wondering if you have anything additional to add that would be beneficial in us helping to make a decision that would change our mindset from what it has been?
Um, I don't know that there is. I mean, we, we believe that we're in compliance completely with- I mean, we believe that we're in compliance completely with every ordinance the city has. We have a difference of opinion with staff on the requirement for drainage. And, you know, we're happy to reengage, but at this point, we're requesting a recommendation one way or the other.
Let me read this just for, just for the record. It's Code 10-6A-4, Lot Grading and Drainage. In Section B, it says, "Lots shall be laid out to provide positive drainage away from all buildings in accordance with the uniform building plan. An individual lot drainage shall be coordinated with the general storm drainage pattern of the area. Drainage shall be designed to avoid concentration of stormwater drainage from any lot to adjacent lots." I guess that's my, I mean, they're going to be draining into each other from what I can see.
Yeah, again, there's numerous examples in the city and projects both that we've done and have been approved for other developers where the slope from front to back is more than what ours are. So remember that we have seen and read in the code, we believe that we comply. And we're still happy to sit down and discuss if there's something else that can be done, but we believe we're in compliance with the ordinance and with what has previously been approved in the city. And so, again, we respectfully request a recommendation, whatever that is.
I just wanted to point out, I'm sure you've read this, and this is from our staff's response. Our experience with this issue confirms that the size of the lot and population are not acceptable solutions to prevent the pooling and collection of water on these lots. So I think that our experts here at the city are basing their response on the experience that we've had with similar situations. And so I hope you can appreciate that when we make a decision, it's, there's no personal gain. We're trying to make up the benefit of the people that are going to live out here and how it affects them.
Okay.
And I'm not saying you're doing otherwise, that there's business, and then I think we're just trying to make the best decision for the future of the people that are going to be affected by this. So it's nothing personal.
Understood.
Even though I know it's frustrating for you, so.
Good. Commissioners, any other questions for Mr. Bingham?
Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone either online or in the building that would like to make a comment regarding this request for this item on our agenda?
Jolie Taylor, 3627, 550 west. Our property, or my mother's property, is north of where this is at. I've been contacted a couple of times by Mr. Bingham about the way he wants to run the irrigation water, and it's been changed, he's trying to change the way it comes. I just want to make sure that everything on here is the way that it was planned in the original for the water to be ran to Jay Thompson's, and that we're, that they understand that there's going to be the drain ditch and the irrigation ditch for running our irrigation water.
And where is that, where is that ditch relative to that plat?
Well, the one for Jay, the one for Jay was originally to come down, follow down the road, and then come across into where his park is there in the back. And then ours is at the very back. It runs along where the existing, where they've already started the other subdivision part of, of, I don't know, there's so many minerals, I don't know which one it is. But, but it runs all the way along the back to my mom's property, so. And they've already, the one, we got, the one sub divider is tried to run it, run, tried to, thinking that they could multiply the drain ditch and the irrigation ditch together. And we got that stopped, and that's, and that's one of the other things that Steve had brought up to me by doing, by doing that. And I say, no way, we can't help that.
Yeah, we got supply ditches and we've got drain ditches, and they're not the same.
Right, and drain ditch isn't going to work for irrigation yet.
Right.
So has anything up with, do you feel like with that changed from our previous approval that we did?
No, the infrastructure for Phase Two will be dealing with that ditch next. Clears the bell in the ordinance that the ditches need to be piped. There was an existing drain ditch and an existing irrigation ditch, so that's two facilities. Our ordinance also supports that they have to be settled, so there shouldn't be any problem when we come to Phase Two approvals, making that happen. One thing I wanted to point out on that, the lot drainage, so you can see the road there, those contour lines that Tracy talked about, so the natural lay of that ground we predeveloped is that everything goes to the north and the west, and you can just see those contour lines. So when they put that road in there, 5400 west, it's going to be built up above natural grade. And so the one side of the road is what we're talking about. If we're going to build the road up, let's build the lots up equally. The other side of the road, not only is the road built up and that water going to want to run down to the natural grade, but it continues to flow that way as well with the natural contour. So you can see on the plan, the berm, that's going to prevent that water from running onto Jay Thompson's. Now, all we're asking for is, okay, now where's the water going to go? Let's put in a drain system to carry it to a waterway. So it's really not that complicated. It's, I think you can grasp that that water's going to flow that way, the berm's going to stop it from going onto the neighbor's property, but then where does it go? And we're just saying we need-
We just need to be able to-
So there's no drain, there's no drain system to get it out other than just that berm?
Okay.
So, and here it indicated that Nelson Homes was willing to, you know, continue to work with the city on that, so.
And it sounds like they've made a lot of progress, like a lot of things that you mentioned have been taken care of.
And the first, so the first plat that got, that was approved, the drainage was acceptable. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And now it's been modified?
It had a drainage system along there that went into-
That made sense.
-by the defense on the basis.
And so now, now that the plans and things have been changed, then that drainage system's been eliminated or revised to where it's not acceptable? Okay. Any other comments?
I just wanted to know if you two color coordinated if that was planned for tonight or?
I don't need to, I'm not trying to-
I know, okay.
No. Well, thank you.
Not you. Oh, I guess, figure my own.
So I was, I was just going to make a comment, and, you know, not to be overly critical, but, I mean, this, we basically made these comments for the first time last April, and so how is it that they're, and now they're having attorneys send a letter, so how is it they're willing to work with staff? What they're willing to do is come in here and tell us every place where we haven't done this, and so, you know, give in. And that's, that's our concern as staff. You know, if they wanted to work with us, they could have come in and stood and keep sending the same thing with little revisions, but not addressing the things that we continue to say, and then all of a sudden, the attorney has to respond to us, and I don't reconsider that working with staff. I've been here 20 years, and we haven't had to deal with that until now, so.
Good point.
Very good point. Okay. Commissioners, any other discussion you want to have here on this?
I don't think there's anything further to discuss than like-
I mean, dealing with drainage is something you do with every subdivision, right? It's challenged on every subdivision.
And it's possible, we've, possibly we've got it wrong before, but there are also conditions where Jared has been out in the field and said, what are you going to do to fix this drainage? Well, we're going to go ahead and bring all this material in, and the next thing you know, there's a fence built without anything done. Yeah, and so that's, that's what we're also trying to avoid, so.
Well, and we're the ones that live out here and are going to have the people come to us and say, why didn't you allow this to go through if you knew there were issues with this? So I think it's, I think we're lucky to have people that are, I mean, are citizens' interest at heart, so.
Well, and I feel like, you know, just putting a berm at the back of the property to keep the water from going further north and west is, is not the answer. That's a good place for it, to stop it. It's a good way to stop it. We still need to get it off the lots.
Yeah, where's it going to go? It's still going to be-
Yeah. Okay. If there's no more discussion, then we could entertain a motion on this request for a preliminary plat approval for the amended Silver Saddles.
I think it's a final.
Yeah, I hope we want to free, I mean, we have it's applicable with final approval of the amended stuff that we're doing, and-
Okay, so a final approval for the amended Silver Saddles.
But I think it's similar, I think you're, I would suggest you have a couple of options. You either approve, recommend approval, I should say, recommend approval with conditions, deny, or I guess you could continue with it.
We can table too.
You can make a call on that.
So you're for, I mean, just-
Well, in, in, in spirit of their verbiage, which is they said they would want to work with us, in reality, you know, I would be in favor to table it and give them, give them another opportunity to, to work with us, to do what's, what we want, or what's best for the city.
Well, it appears to me too that they've, they've come a long way in getting it right. There's just a few more items that need to be taken care of, and I think, you know, we as a planning commission, our, our determination is to not recommend things that aren't complete.
Yep, and I think it's important we stand by that. My question, and I hope this would be to Brandon or, gosh, my brain just went out the window, Steve. If we table it, what would be the proper timeframe to do that? To the next planning commission meeting? Would be the best adequate time, or?
From our side, yes. I don't think you go out any further than that. And then I think at that point, you gotta make a decision.
Okay.
If you want to give them a month to try to come to the table, great, but then I think you gotta make a decision.
Can I just, our, our request remains to have a recommendation to the city council.
And our position is that we're not recommending to city council anything that's incomplete.
You can still make a recommendation.
We can also still table it. That's something that we have to decide, but I appreciate you letting us know.
Okay.
Just make one more comment, then, I mean, if had a chance to work with us, it's pretty clear he doesn't want to even though he says it, so. A decision needs to be made as to whether the city's going to accept this because as the staff, we're not satisfied. So, I don't know that that's necessarily sending something to the council undone. That's clearly stating, you know, the staff doesn't like it, so we're not going to accept it, or we are going to accept it.
But, I mean, there's a, do you want to say something?
No, but, I was just going to say, I mean, I know, you know, contractor say cost was up, et cetera, et cetera, you know, time moved down the road, they got opportunity to do it. My deal is this, cost goes up, obviously the contractor doesn't end up paying that cost. I mean, they do additionally, but they just, they pass it on to the people on the lots, right? That's who actually pays the, pays the bill. And so if they're gonna, we get it done right, they pay the bill, and they're happy with the result, we don't have complaints down the road. So you stand up for homeowners, you stand up for the city, that's right.
And that's been our position all along.
And my opinion is, I think there's a lot invested here. I think that us denying this, I think they've put a lot of work into it. I don't think that they're going to want to walk away from this, I would assume. So to me, I would like to give them the benefit of the doubt that things are heated, there's a lot of emotions, but hopefully they'll take the opportunity to fix these last few things, and they will work with us like they've indicated. And we put it out another month, and then at that point, if they haven't done it, I think it will be easier for us to make a decision. That's my opinion.
Okay.
I think that's a good compromise.
Okay. Given, any other discussion? If not, then let's entertain a motion on this item on our agenda.
You're good at the verbiage.
I'll motion that we table the final approval of the Silver Saddle subdivision located approximately 3,700 south, 5,600 west for Nelson Homes until the next planning commission meeting, which should be, should have been put up, June 10th.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Prince to table this request until next planning commission meeting, which is June 10th.
And I get, I should probably add to that so that the developer has time to address and resolve the concerns that we've mentioned tonight and that the staff has referenced in their memo.
So the memo of May 12th? Is that the memo you're referring to?
The memo from May 12, 2021.
Okay, right. Okay, so we have a motion from Commissioner Prince that this item be tabled.
And did you have any version of the meet city staff's recommendation or just address the memo?
I think I said address and resolve.
Okay.
So, you may want to double check the tape, but I think I said that.
So, the motion is to table this until June 10th?
June 12.
12.
10th.
10th.
Just kidding.
June 10th.
The memo was May 12.
With Nelson Homes' opportunity to address and resolve the issues on the memos. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. Do we have a second for this motion?
I'll second it.
And we have a second from Commissioner Platt. Those in favor?
I'd-
Okay, thank you. That motion passes, and this has been tabled. Since this is a public meeting, any other citizen comments either in the, in the building or online? If not, then we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion that we adjourn. I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Aye.
Oh, anybody vote for that? Yes, all those in favor.
Aye.
Secondary, secondary.
Price.
Price.
No turn.
Turn.
So, the reason he wanted us to make a recommendation is he wanted us to recommend